All right, so with that, we will move on to two study sessions that we have tonight. The first is the Christie Avenue Park redesign and expansion.
Good evening, Chair Moss, Planning Commissioners. This is the second study session for the Christie Park expansion. I would like to just take you through the evolution of the park design since there have been a lot of meetings. It would be useful for the Commission to understand how it started. So back in May, the applicant did a community meeting, and the idea was to kind of take in comments of what the community needed. They just presented the existing site conditions and some ideas for what could possibly go in that park. That was followed by a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, and they took comments from that committee. And after taking the comments from the two meetings, the Planning Commission had a study session in July. Subsequently, after taking the Planning Commission's comments, the applicant defined the plan a little bit more, took that to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting in September, and took that to the B-PAC committee as well. They also had a city council study session in October, earlier this month. They got some comments from the council. And after that, in mid-October, the city arborist and the applicant team met together and sorted out a few issues regarding tree removal as well as the plant palette. And now, this is the second study session, which kind of brings to you the various understandings and comments that have been taken by the applicant. Just to remind you, in terms of the comments that the Commission made at your January meeting, you liked the approach that park design was taking, and the various park program elements were acceptable. There was a suggestion that the non-circular dog park be separated from a children's play area. Mix of creative and standard play structures was suggested. The space for movie screenings was deemed not particularly necessary, given the wind conditions in this area. You suggested that an arborist report was necessary to determine what trees should and could be preserved. This was followed by the city council comments earlier this month. Their comments included that they suggested that the main path that runs through the park be made more direct and straight. They wanted to make sure that the park used the standard street furniture in terms of seatings as well as streetlights. They wanted to add benches that would face the children's play area. And they also wanted the tree removal and plant palette to be reviewed by the city arborist. They also suggested that the applicant should allow for the possibility of a larger park that would incorporate the adjacent city parcel in the future. So the applicant responded to the various comments in the following way. The shape of the dog park is now not circular and is separated from the play area. A more defined play area with the creative play equipment has been added. They have converted a flexible-use lawn area, which is smaller now, which could be used for small events. And they have made sure that they include electrical outlets, as this is one of the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Committee. The main path, as a result of the council comment, has been made straighter. The native and low-water-use plant palette has been further refined. More benches and tables have been added. Tables was a suggestion that they got from B-PAC. They acknowledged the use of city street furniture. They have also included the bear-friendly scorecard as a way to indicate the kind of palette that they are having, and they have scored 101 points, and the minimum recommended is 60, so they are doing fairly well in that respect. They have also included in the submittal preliminary proposal to allow for a larger park incorporating the city parcel. This was a suggestion that the city council wanted. And the city arborists and the applicant team have collaborated and have had meetings. So to remind you, this is the original marketplace at build-out showing you the location of the proposed park. This is an overall view of the existing Christie Park and shows the boundaries of where the expansion is going to take place. Now, this is the concept plan that the Commission saw at the July study session. As you can see, it is pretty much a concept plan, kind of telling you what the thinking behind the proposal was at that time. This is the park design, which is more refined, and this was shown at the city council study session earlier this month. And where the plans sort of come into being, so you have the dog park, you have a lawn area, and then you have a children's play area. And this is the main path that I was talking about a little bit, that connects Christie Avenue to the marketplace development. And the proposal that they have now in front of you is this. So as you can see, this path has become straighter, and various different elements regarding the benches and bike racks have also been incorporated. And the applicant will go into more details of how the park has come together in terms of both the hardscape and the landscape, the edges, so you'll hear about that from the applicant. I'd like to talk a little bit about the tree removal plan. So at the first study session that you saw, they proposed to preserve one tree, with the removal of approximately 55 trees. The initial arborist recommendation that went to the city council study session added preservation of nine additional trees. In the current tree removal plan, this has been arrived by the city arborist and the applicant, and the decision mutually has been that five, total of five trees, the ones in green, should be preserved and will be preserved. Before I go into that, the city arborist is here for you if you have any questions from them. They have also reviewed the current plant palette, and they are in agreement with the choice of tree species as well as shrubs, with the caveat that when, right now, we do not know what the soil conditions are at this site. This will come later on as they start work on that. And at that time, the soil conditions may have an impact on the final choice of the tree species. So the way to work this out is that in the condition of approval, one condition would say that the city arborist would have the final determination of the type of tree species that would be finally planted in the park. So this is the concept for a larger park that the applicant, kind of for illustrative purposes, have included, because the city council wanted to see it. So essentially, this is the adjacent city parcel to the north, and it kind of shows that you have a lawn area that works with the children's play area here. And there are, you know, conceptual paths around this lawn area. In terms of conformity to the general plan and consistency with the approved PUD, the general plan designation of the existing park is Park Open Space, and of the expansion area is MUR. And the zoning for the existing park is Park and Open Space, and the expanded area is within the PUD, that's the approved PUD. So the proposed park does conform to the approved PUD in terms of location, size, and inclusion of the pedestrian access through the park connecting Christie Avenue to the public market. The approved PUD also included a 6,000-square-feet retail pad within the park, and this pad has been omitted. However, the staff believes that the proposed park is in compliance as there are adequate retailer uses near the park. So compliance of the proposal with the Parks and Recreation Plan, this plan's recommended park program includes a number of things, including playful children, socializing and relaxing, picnicking, and special events. The plan's potential program elements include recreation with dogs and games. And the site recommendations include integration of art to create play features and to develop a portion of the 62nd Street and frontage on Christie Avenue as plaza space with seating. And these all have been incorporated in the proposal. As I've mentioned, there was a community meeting held, and that's how the park design got started. About 25 people attended. The main comment was that the design should retain the existing connection through the park from Christie Avenue to the public market, create a space for dog park and children's play area. In addition to the children's play area, it was felt that the space was also needed for people to relax. Importance of good lighting was emphasized. In terms of Parks and Recreation Committee comments, as I've mentioned, this proposal has now gone twice to the committee. At the June meeting, a number of recommendations were made, which have been incorporated in the current plan. And that was, again, reviewed last month by the committee, so the plan that you are seeing has been reviewed. The committee was satisfied with the plan and recommended that the applicant try to save a few trees if possible. The proposal also went to the B-PAC. It was reviewed on October 6th. And their recommendation was to include bike racks within the park, add some tables in the seating area, and use more native plants. And all these have been incorporated in the proposal in front of you. So the issues for the Commission to provide us comment is whether the proposed tree removal at this point is acceptable to the Commission. Regarding the program elements, essentially, the program elements are a dog park, a lawn area, and children's play area. Are these appropriate for the site, in your opinion? Does the Commission wish to add or exclude any element? We would like to have your opinion regarding the proposed plant palette and the hardscape materials that you will know more about as the applicant gives their presentation. So that essentially concludes my presentation. We want your comment on these issues or any other issues that you may have. So if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer. Otherwise, the applicant is here with their presentation.
Any questions of staff?
The current tree removal proposal that you put on the screen, is that the one that's in our packet or the one that's in this report or which?
I'm sorry?
What is the current tree removal proposal?
It's the one in the packet.
Okay.
Maru, just to clarify, so the Parks and Rec Commission at their second meeting, and the B-PAC, and the city council have all seen the same proposal that's before us tonight?
That is correct. The only thing that has changed is the tree removal concept.
Okay, thanks.
Are there city standards with regard to the maturity level of the trees being planted?
No. There is a certain minimum size of, I believe, very inches. So any tree that has a DBH of, I want to say, two inches, any removal of that tree requires a permit. So other than that...
No, actually, any tree. There's no minimum size, but I don't believe this would need that because it's a city park project.
I guess my question's about the new trees. So, you know, I guess, is there some standard to avoid a bunch of saplings being planted?
Oh, we don't have any standards in terms of new trees being planted, the size of the new trees? No, we don't have standards.
Do have a standard condition of approval regarding trees, you know, just sort of generically in development projects. I think it's 24-inch box.
Correct.
And then there's some standards about soil, you know, volume, rootable soil volume and all that kind of thing. Those are not adopted standards. They're in our standard conditions of approval that we pretty much use every time. If the Commission wishes, I would imagine we will include similar standards in the conditions of approval for this final development plan. If you want to direct us to modify those standards to provide bigger trees or something, we could do that, although the arborist may have some recommendations about that. I know they sometimes prefer not really small trees, but not super-big trees, because they have a better chance to establish themselves if they're not too big when they get planted. And I see our two landscape people nodding their heads.
Because I had asked about that. Yeah. It would be good to hear about, from the arborist, about the particular tree species and what the recommendations would be for each of them.
Right.
So with your permission, should I hand it over to the applicant to give their presentation? Or if there weren't any questions?
Any other questions before we hand it over to the applicant? Sure.
I do have one question. It's about the potential expansion area. I had the understanding that it was being considered for affordable housing as well. Is there a reason that the park expansion is being looked at?
This was something that came out of the city council study session. There was a member of public who has been petitioning that the city should use this land for an expanded park, that this was an opportunity to make the park even bigger. And as a result of that, the city council, most of them did like the idea in theory. And they wanted to make sure that the design of this park does not preclude any expansion in the future. That's it.
We should underscore...
And what's the status of the city-owned property there?
I can answer that. We should underscore that the applicant here is only responsible for the expansion of the park as shown in the PUD. So that's all that will be before you when this FDP comes to you for approval. As Maru said, we want to make sure the design doesn't preclude the potential expansion of the south. The city owns three parcels along Christie Avenue to the south of the park. One of them is actually, I believe, kind of bifurcated by the 59th Street, which goes into the backside of the public market. It says 59th Street, but it's actually technically not a city street, it's just an easement. The parcel that's immediately adjacent, the so-called Ted Dang parcel, to the south, was purchased with housing money. The other two parcels were not. So the original thought was to have an affordable housing project on the parcel next to the park, and then have the other two parcels developed as just some kind of a mixed-use development. However, the city attorney has opined that the housing does not necessarily have to be restricted to that particular parcel, that the housing obligation can be moved to another one of the three parcels or even to another parcel in the city, as long as that is still set aside for housing somewhere. So the council, and upon hearing that, the council said, well, let's think about having the park expanded to the Dang parcel and then have the housing be on one of the other two parcels or maybe somewhere else. I would just like to let you know that tentatively, we have scheduled for your next meeting on December 11th, a study session on the Christie Avenue properties, so that you can weigh in on what you think should be there before the city council has a study session on it in January or February. And actually, the schedule is kind of shifting, so it may not come to you until January, but sometime within the next few months, you will have a chance to weigh in on what you think should be on those Christie Avenue parcels.
Great. Thank you.
So if there are no further questions?
Good to see you all again. My name's Mark Stephan. I am the president of City Center Realty Partners. We're the owners of the public market. I want to let you know that we have enjoyed working with the community and the Commission, the council, B-PAC, and Parks and Recs over the last six months to develop this plan. We really started with a blank sheet of paper, and we think it's made for a better park and a better process. We're pleased with where we've come to tonight, and I think you'll see that we've worked hard to incorporate all the comments that we've received. I'd like to now introduce our architects, Aaron Ashley and Ann Howerton, and they'll run through a little bit of the detail beyond which you've previously heard from Maru.
Yes, Mark said it's, I feel like we've been at this lectern a lot lately, but, and certainly you've seen a lot of the marketplace lately. And one of the suggestions that I think you all had had for another marketplace application at your October 2nd meeting was a little bit more background on how the park relates to the master plan as a whole. And so we wanted to add a few slides in there just as an intro into the park. But, you know, as a reminder, the existing Christie Park is where you see it in front of PPP, and we're proposing to move north to the, what would be 63rd Street, which is just south of the Essex Building that's about to be opened. In terms of the site today, the original PDP over the 11 acres or so, did not, well, the PDP included the park, the city park, but the ownership never included the park. And the understanding was that the park would expand to the north, and an acreage was set of around 1.25 or so. The theater, the Essex Building, as you know, and then a whole lot of parking lots that you've seen a number of proposals on recently. In terms of an update, if you've been to the market recently, you've seen that its construction has started, and the first piece of that is ongoing. This is a rendering of the balance of the work that hasn't been started yet. You know, a lot of the great tenants are going to be there, the Taco Shop and everybody else that everybody likes. It'll just feel a little newer and fresher. Another view. And so this work has already started and ongoing. In a future phase of the marketplace renovation, the ground floor of the office building and the alley that you know will be transformed also, so that's a follow-on project. One question we've discussed with you before is how does the current proposal fit with the previous proposal? So the bottom drawing here comes out of the project's TDM plan. We've, as the PDP required, is a kind of a really extensive and progressive transit plan that works with the city's general plan and identifies all the bus stops and bike storage and car share and all those sorts of things that happen around the site. But you do get a sense of the park, and because of the retail pad that was in the park, as we kind of measure usable area, the park as proposed in 2008 was about 1.08 acres, and now we really feel like it's a usable park of 1.27 acres. In terms of circulation, you know, a lot of the market forces from 2008 have changed, so this is a slight variation, but we feel and we've worked through with staff that the pieces are all in the same place, at least with regard to the park. So in terms of phasing, the park is the first phase. The intention is to get started with construction next year. And then the remainder of the master plan and the build-out, which you'd see in future FDP study sessions, would come on the heels. But the park would certainly be the first thing finished at the marketplace. We saw you about a year ago on a study session with regard to the road relocation and the retail, and this is just as kind of a reminder of what the character of the public market is currently envisioned to be, a really walkable, pedestrian-friendly, bike-focused retail environment, a real Main Street and the kind of the heart of Emeryville. As Maru indicated, we've been talking about the park a lot in the last six months, and what's really been phenomenal is to see that the community all has an opinion and really cares about this park, and really had a clear idea about what they wanted in this park. And I think the park that you saw, or the preliminary sketch that you saw in July, was really rough, because that was a measure of the amount of input we've gotten. And then the park that you see today is a measure of the amount of input we've received since, and including your own. And the folks at Parks and Rec really had phenomenal input when we saw them early in the summer, and they were really gratified to see the result when we saw them again in September, same with B-PAC. And city council, again, had a lot of really good input. Our hope is that on the heels of today, we can fold your input into a resubmission and that on your December calendar, you would approve this so that we could get started with construction in 2015. As a kind of segueing from the master plan into the technical details of the park itself, the park today is 8.85 acres. It has an easement on the south side, which is actually utilities for the marketplace, and it's that concrete stretch. The berm that you all know subdivides the park into two pieces. And the proposed park adds just under a half an acre, and the resulting park is about 1.27 acres. If you sort of step back and squint at Emeryville as a whole, that new park is roughly the size of the contiguous piece of Doyle Hollis. It's similar in dimension in both width and acreage. And although we're thinking of uses in a slightly different way and certainly a different kind of look and feel, the kinds of things that happen at Doyle Hollis, the inflated castles on Saturdays and all those things are anticipated to be here as well, although acknowledging that the climate is certainly different on this side of Emeryville.
Now, we'll segue down to the detail of the design, and I know that you probably remember parts of this from July, but just to make sure we cover all the bases, we'll bring you through a series of slides showing the development of the detailed design, and I hope I'm here to answer questions. We look forward to your input. This has been, as was said, a very interesting, active series of meetings with lots of good refinement to the park process and design. So just to refresh your memory, these are key views taken of the existing site. You can see on the lower slide at the left how the expanded area will bump up to the current Essex Building, which is under construction in that slide. The big berm on the right, on the lower right, is the one that everybody, without exception, said, you know, it really doesn't work for us, we just assume it's not there, let's talk about what needs to happen at the park. Want to do this slide?
Sure.
Okay. Is it this one? Okay. This just starts you off with our program development. We didn't start by coming up with a design and trying to force it to fit. We stood back and listened and took a lot of input. We did start by analyzing and listening to important comments from the community about circulation, about access, about how important that diagonal existing path is in terms of connectivity up to the train and up to Shell Mound, and also heard about the possibility of the city-owned land becoming housing, loan-kept housing, and the fact that we should retain flexibility for that to have access. We're aware of the expanding community. In the next few years, there will be thousands of new people dwelling within a five-minute walk of this park. This will be a park. This will be people's social gathering space, very much so. And so we are thinking about what elements from Emeryville's own park plan needed to be here, and we've asked for confirmation on those details, and we've started to refine the details during the process, with a little bit of focused direction on the elements that I'll comment on as we show you the next series of slides. This one?
Yep.
Okay. Here's an important thing to understand. We have, oops, we have a sun and shade situation because of the PPP to the west. Sun all day in the south, and that assumes we don't have a five or six-story building on the parcel, the city-owned land. We do have afternoon sun on the east, next to the public market in a small sliver, and we have morning sun on the north. It's pretty clear how that shadow of that building affects things. This is what happens if there is a build-out on the city land, assuming five or six stories. There's a pocket of sun all day. It's interestingly, you know, on access with that plaza between what is a future development parcel C and the existing public market. And then we have afternoon sun on the south, we have morning sun on the north. So as we took our input from the first Park and Rec Committee, and we summarized it on this slide for you here now, we learned that instead of just having sort of regulated off-leash dog use, there really was a desire for a specific dog park, and so a small fenced area was then contemplated. We retained all the circulation issues and comments. We heard that socializing opportunities at park entrances was a desire, that in fact, we should anticipate the need for some actual passive and active uses blended throughout the park, not discreetly located on one end or the other, and that in fact, again, we heard that the stage was not necessary, that the weather here is, can be quite windy at times, and focus on other things. There did seem to be an idea that there might be some sort of children's play area, and it had not taken shape at this point on the slide. Here's the first time we drew a concept, and this was, I think you can tell, we waited till July, and this is the one that you saw several months ago. And surprisingly, not, maybe not unsurprisingly, it still looks like the same place. A lot of the early input... A lot of the early input continued to resonate through a series of things that have then occurred and we've just refined the details. So what you see on this slide is the idea that we would take that plaza and we would pull it through the park with a strong plaza connection. Also, the main, the main walkway, which has been straightened out, the details of a playground, which has park equipment in it now, and some creative art pieces at C in what is a lawn plaza space. We've retained the open flexible lawn space. We still have the berms that we talked about with you several months ago, adjacent to the children's playground. As you can see, the dog park has some circular benches under trees. It may have a water element or something of that sort. And we've kept all the connections that you can see on the plan, allowing good access.
May I just clarify? I believe this plan is not what the commission saw in July. This is the plan that you've revised in response to their comments in July.
I'm sorry, that is absolutely correct.
Right, okay.
Okay. Oops.
Got excited.
Got a little excited. Now we go to a series of enlargements that allows you to see the detail in the slide. This is the main pathway character that's envisioned at Christie Avenue with a trellis idea such as the slide at the right, with a nice widened pathway such as the view in the lower right. And it's that connectivity through the park. This is the idea that's for Christie Avenue up at the northernmost corner. This is opposite, a coffee shop on the opposite side of the street. And this is where we talked about an idea for a small sculpture that would appeal to young children with some seating and, and again, connected connectivity into the park. This is focusing on how the plaza space next to the market would connect directly into the park and allow that nice exploration connectivity. It's also where we have that pocket of sun that I mentioned earlier and at C, that would be the sunny area. We have responded to comments from the council and have sort of created an interesting seating arrangement so that one could sit on a concrete bench and look at the playground area as well as facing into area C. These are the ideas we have for some of the programming. It's focused on free exploration, fantasy play, there's some bouncing mats, there's a flexible reed kind of art piece that's interactive. We're talking about using rubber matting surfacing underneath. And that whale sculpture is an idea that we've latched on to from some investigations that is central to the playground idea. We still have the discovery path. That's the walkway on the right of the plan view with some wonderful berms shaped into the grass. And the lower images are giving you a sense of the character of that particular piece of walkway that winds along the southern edge of the park. This again just points out that whether or not this is a great venue for movies, it's a great place to hang out, do all kinds of things, including the all-important respite and solitude that we heard from the community and that's in the original park programming. But that lawn area is of a nice size. The lower right slide also shows the fact that the widened walkway that crosses the park has benches situated along its length and would be a real kind of social gathering space as well. These are some inspirational images that show the content of the proposed dog park. Dog waste dispenser, a paw wash station, those circular benches would be something like the image that you see at the upper right-hand. And we've done some preliminary investigations about dog park fountains and think there would be provision so that it's user-activated and self-draining. And alternatively, if the finding is that you prefer to not have that, there are other things out there that dogs can play on. This is a summary of the hardscape materials. We were talking about a pervious DG, compacted, of course, somewhat in the dog park area, the rubber matting that I mentioned in the playground. Accent paving would be brick, but primarily concrete on the main axis, that's the pink area. And then the brown area would be sidewalk concrete and pathways. They're the pictures that correspond to the plan you just saw. What am I doing?
I don't know.
Okay. The all-important discussion about tree removal. As was mentioned in the staff report, we have reached a conclusion between the arborist who's been consulting on the project for our firm and our team and the city arborists who are here tonight. I'll draw your attention to the numbered green tree locations. Four of them are London Plains situated on a berm facing Christie. And one of them is the better of the group of magnolias that form a straight line at the north edge of the existing park and they basically bisect the park. It was felt that we could retain through a creative solution of grading and pathway alignment, number 47. This shows the proposed palette of trees. It's been worked on with our arborist based on what we speculate but cannot confirm about the soil conditions at this park. We certainly know a lot about the soil to the east of here in the Shell Mound District and we do know what happens directly across the street to the north on the Essex site. And based on some speculation that we have high groundwater, possibly brackish, we do have a windy site, we will be able to berm the edges to a modest degree to improve that condition. But overall, we need to be very prudent in our choice of trees and we've been working closely over the last three weeks with the city arborists to come to a conclusion about what is a suitable palette. And we have tried to focus on incorporating more natives, as was suggested by the council. So we have native oaks shown on the plan now. And we are also looking in terms of fall color, which was a request of the city arborist. And so I point out that the black gum tree is suitable for recycled water, the site conditions, and should be an interesting fall color accent with vibrant red color. Here's the palette displayed. The upper two photographs are not the trees at the park. Well, the one on the upper left is. Those are the trees at the berm that are being retained. There are four London Plains. And then in addition, those are the other proposed species. So we will have one Magnolia grandiflora, that is the picture of the tree and that is being retained at the park, number 47. This is a color arrangement that shows what's going on on the ground plains. So A, the bright green area is a usable lawn. The whole history of discussion with Parks and Rec Committee, community and so forth is give us a lot of flexible use space. And so by intention, bearing in mind that this is a reasonable-sized park, but not an enormous park, we are proposing that most of it is active-use lawn. However, the edges at E are a native grass in a sort of a no-mow condition that can also be used for seating, picnicking and access. As I say, it's not a high berm that we're proposing, it's very low sculpted berm. You can walk into this park from any point. These are ground cover images that suggest bay area, what's intended, and we're trying to be bay-friendly. Our water use does pass the ordinance. And other than that, we are trying to attract some little butterflies and use things that are specifically from the bay area in terms of some grasses and some perennial color. Here's more of the same. At the main plaza entrance, there was a thought of having a little bit of color variety and attracting some butterflies and allowing it to be kind of a pop of color, if you will. A lot of the surrounding berm would be grasses. We are, right now, we have explored the LID treatment requirement and necessity and based on the detailed lay of the park, the square footages, the proposed materials, the berming and the intended drainage pattern, we are being told by our project civil engineers that we will not need to do anything additional. The design sort of solves its own problems with the addition of some pervious paving on the walkway system. Here's the hardscape and site amenities. We've responded to inputs from the Park and Rec Committee and various other entities as we've met with them. So at this point, we have dog waste dispensers at key areas. We have an interesting drinking fountain we found that's allows you to fill drinking bottles and other sorts of things. I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, but you can see we've incorporated bikes, bike parking at key locations outside the park and also inside the park at this point. And we've also picked up some picnic tables in proximity to the children's playground, thinking that's a great place for birthday parties, families and anyone really. This is the equipment. We were requested to use the city's furnishings, which we are now doing, and lighting, which we are now doing. These are some close-ups of the proposed play equipment. This is the bouncing mat. This is a climbing structure idea, which we can customize the colors to. This is this interesting reed exploration piece. It's part art and it's part play. It's designed for play. And this, of course, is the whale. This is a color choice. We're thinking about using these in the matting interpretation of colors to play off the idea of the whale and the other equipment. This is our point system. This is a preliminary scorecard estimate, of course, but we've gone through it thoroughly and we are exceeding the 80-point minimum by good 21 points at this point. That's it.
I have a question.
Jeff, if you've got any questions.
Can you go back a few more slides to where the lighting was shown? We just kind of went by that a little too quickly. So...
I think it's not on that one.
Okay, so...
We're showing lighting on the main path through and then it's not on this drawing, but the intent is that the Christie Avenue streetlights, 63rd Street and the new street would have street lighting.
Okay.
And a question, I would say an open question for this body that hasn't come up here before is, and should more lighting be used along the other pathways?
Right, okay, thank you. There was a mention of some, in the plant palette, some vines being used and I know that there's one on the entrance there to Christie Avenue, but is there, there's something about a fence, is that the dog park fence?
The dog park fence is three to four feet high, it's open mesh. We thought we'd thread some potato vine and hardened beria through it.
What was the rationale for the pitasporum rhombiform being chosen to align the sort of central pathway?
Let me just say that this palette is trying to work hard to survive in this place. The arborist I'm working with is Nelda Matheny. She's kind of a soils, a tricky soils bay area specialist and I have vetted all of this with her and she has been in direct talks with the city arborist. The feeling about the pitasporum, and you're welcome to direct your comments to the city arborist as well, is that it would provide intermediate levels of shade, medium scale, which would allow us to sort of thread them through the park, but not be oppressively dark or heavy. They put out a little fragrant blossom. It's a very, it's a tree that's doing very well a block from this park. That's probably my biggest reason for wanting to use it, unlike some other trees which are struggling in Emeryville. It's doing very well. It will tolerate the brackish water, the possibility, it takes the recycled, it will take the wind. It's doing well in San Francisco as well.
This is a question maybe for staff, but you mentioned bounce houses and I know that's a frequent use at Doyle Hollis Park, but is that something that anybody can do in any park or is it, do you determine park by park what uses can be?
Well, there is a city, what's it called, Special Events Committee. And any event such as that would require a permit from the city. That would have to be vetted by the Special Events Committee, which includes representatives from all the various city departments. The programming of parks is handled by the Community Services Department. And so a person who wanted to bounce house in a park would go to them and make an application, which would then be referred to the Community Events Committee. So it's all done on a case-by-case basis. I don't know if there are specific guidelines for each park as to what is allowed or not allowed in each one. That would be something Community Services would handle.
Charlie, is the arborist that did the report here, I'm sorry?
Hort Science? I don't know.
For the trees?
No, I'm afraid she's on the east coast. There was a conflict.
Okay.
But the city arborist is here.
The city arborist is here. Great. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Would you like to hear from the city arborist?
Sure, yeah.
Good evening. My name's Steve Batshielder and I've been working with the city of Emeryville for a number of years. So any questions you may have on any of the trees?
Pull the mic up a little bit.
What, oh, sorry. Any trees you...
There you go.
Okay. Yes, any questions you have on trees, I'm glad to try to answer.
Can you, can you talk to the species that have been suggested and give me your thoughts, maybe especially on the nissa and the Quercus agrofolia in this spot?
First, the nissa, which is also the tupelo, is, it's other than other name for it is water gum. And it, all the trees that were picked, Nelda basically gave us a list and we worked on it for a while and rejected some, but we came to, you know, acceptance. And that, they were all based on resilience or ability to grow under saltier conditions. For instance, the redwood tree would die right away. So anyway, the nissa is a nice tree, it has fall color. It does like a little more water than a lot of other trees. So you would plant it, I guess, at the corner of the lawn or places where it'd get a lot of water that way. The coast live oak is our native tree, which can get quite big. As an arborist, we generally like to have a few big trees. There's something about, you know, having a full-size tree there. So the coast live oak is our native tree, would probably, would be growing in the drier mounded areas and it would be expected to do very well. The key to any tree is to have good soil, sufficient volume of good soil and they can grow. If you want specs on that, we can talk about that too.
Well, I wanted to talk a little bit further about the level of the groundwater there, which is very high. And so, you know, the live oak is a, it's deep-rooted tree. It will have its feet in the water.
The situation is with trees is their roots go where they can. If they cannot grow underwater, they will not go down there. Plant it on a mounded area, if we can provide that tree with about 1,500 cubic feet of rootable soil, that means soil less than 80% compacted that, you know, is, receives, you know, not too much salty water. And if everything else is fine, you know, we, the tree will grow well. They're a very fast-growing tree under good conditions and when we find limitations, then they don't grow. So we're going to try, the main thing we're going to try to focus on is making sure that the root environment will, you know, allow the trees to grow to their maximum.
Have you seen in the area any nissas that have been successful in Emeryville?
Yeah, there's, well...
Can you cite one that I could go look at?
There were some out on the median of San Pablo Avenue. And it was funny because they were growing with the sweet gum, the liquid amber tree. And the median was being overwatered and the liquid amber trees were dying and the nissas were just very happy. So they're right out in the middle of San Pablo Avenue, there's a bunch in Berkeley. You know, they do grow well around here, but they do require water. And a little bit of, anytime, if you notice the plant palette is pretty much evergreen trees. We know that evergreen trees are better under windy... evergreen trees are better under windy, sea-coast conditions than deciduous trees. So we'd want to protect the nissa a little bit, but the oak can handle wind, and the other trees that are evergreen can as well.
Thank you. Recycled water as well?
What?
Recycled water as well?
Recycled water is gonna, there's a salinity to it, yes. And Nelda is working on a book right now. Hort Science is one of the top firms in the country, so they're, and they're working on a book on salt tolerance. We have books, too, from Costello and the University of California Extension. And these are all chosen for their ability to survive under, you know, saltier conditions than normal.
How far apart would you typically want to plant the coast live oaks from each other so that they weren't sort of encroaching on each other, but, you know, if you wanted to provide sort of a consistent canopy?
Well, let me say, there's, yeah, it's hard to say. The coast live oak, at its maximum, can grow to about 80 feet with 100-foot spread. We're not expecting that there. So it depends a lot on what, how you prune them. If you want to keep the side branches back a little bit, then you can plant them closer. But I would say probably, you know, 30, 35 feet would be, you know, a fair distance to space them out. I wouldn't put them down five or 10 feet, although in nature, you see them growing close together, but it's a different form. It depends on, you know, what we, as arborists, what we like to do is when a coast live oak is planted, we like the architect to say, okay, here's what we want. Here's the height of the first permanent branch. Here's the branch spacing. Here's how we like it to go. And if we have those kind of instructions in the beginning, then, you know, pruning can assure that, because the coast live oak takes pruning better than almost any tree I know. So you can make it what you want, but you have to have somebody knowledgeable on it. So...
I have a question for you, since you mentioned, the last thing you said was needing to have knowledge to maintain these trees. So what's been your experience working with the, I mean, our city maintenance folks with regard to the trees in our city and being able to maintain them? Do you work with them? Do you offer training?
Well, I would say we work with them a little bit. We'd like to see, we'd like to see the city give people incentives to become certified arborists, because that's really a qualification that, you know, brings you up, you basically, you know, offer somebody more money for that position. But we think that, you know, to have a qualified, knowledgeable arborist is one of the most important things that you could have regarding trees, because the early structural pruning is the most critical and cost-effective pruning you'll ever give a tree when you get it first. What I used to give talks in the insurance pools around here, actually, Emery, but I used to, I finally figured out to start it out with maintenance people, that I said, okay, I'm a tree. This is a branch. Now, when I grow, is it going to go up, or is it going to stay there? When these maintenance places, you know, basically, people thought that branch was going to go up. And that's why we see great big wounds on trees that somebody thought, oh, it's going to grow up out of the way. So it was a misconception. So that's why we say people need to be trained and knowledgeable about. And there's lots of little things that people don't understand sometimes that are real simple if you, if you're just exposed to it. So we do feel that, you know, you need to have somebody really stay on the trees in the beginning. That's how you get a good-form tree.
Thank you.
One more question. So based on the, based on the trees, and I don't know if you have them in front of you or remember, but...
This stuff, yes.
Oh, perfect. So based on the trees that are proposed in this plan, or, you know, any other trees that you can recommend that are appropriate for the set of conditions that we have on this site, what, of these trees, what would sort of provide the best canopy cover?
We're talking about a canopy cover in what sense? That you want to be a solid canopy cover?
Yeah.
You know, the coast live oak is probably good. The Metrocederos is a, is a nice tree. It's a big tree. It's a coastal tree. There's, I mean, most of the trees, the coast live oak would have the greatest spread on it. Metrocederos and...
In the mix?
What?
Is the Metrocederos in the mix?
Yes, it is. It's the New Zealand Christmas tree.
It's not in our packet.
Oh, this is the latest list that we just, maybe there's some mix up.
I'm happy to hear that that's in the mix, okay?
It is, it is a nice tree. It's a tree we don't like to plant in sidewalks, but in a park, it's a great tree. It has beautiful red flowers and, you know, anyway, so it's a, it is a nice tree. But, you know, like I say, the canopy cover that you can get would be, the largest would be probably, as I said, the coast live oak. Then as far as spread, well, the pitasporum is about a 25-foot tree tall, and it's probably about 20 feet spread. So it's not that big a tree. The Trystenia lorina elegant is probably about the same, maybe 30 feet. It could get bigger, but it's probably got about a 20-foot spread, 25-foot spread. The Melaleuca's pretty narrow. It's, you know...
That's not on our list either.
Okay, that's, okay. These were ones that we disagreed, I don't know, there was, there was a few trees that, in the original list, that we disagreed with, that we thought, you know, weren't, weren't quite appropriate. So Nelda came up with this other list that I have here that I'm sure you will get soon, but we did change a few of them. So are there any trees on your list that you'd like me to talk about, that we threw out or something?
There's lots of trees in the world.
Well, the limitation, see, well, we, the problem with, with the arborist perspective is usually the first thing we like to do is go in and do what we call site analysis. We look at the site. Is it windy? What's the exposure? And then we look at the soils, and we go down five feet or so, and we look and see what we've got, how compact it is, what texture it is, and we have it tested. And then once we know, then we usually proceed to species selections. This time, we're assuming a number of things that are limitations in soil, so we, we had to get a tougher list of species, you know, to accommodate that.
So you didn't, you haven't done the soil test yet?
No, there's, well, it's because there is toxic soil around, as I understand it, we're not allowed to go in and do any soil testing yet. So it'll be a while off. But if we had information that the soil was indeed that somebody before, when they did the park, put three or four feet of good soil in there and things like that, we could change the palette a bit, you know? Although the recycled water is a problem, and so we need to take that into account. But if the soil is well-draining, it doesn't accumulate. Basically, in clay soils, you get into problems. So you have to put gypsum, that's why we put gypsum in all the time to get the sodium and magnesium to leach out. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Before we open the public comment, I was wondering if the applicant might want to come back up real quick and just address some of the discrepancies between the species lists.
This is not a big mystery. There are two more trees on the list. You've just heard them. We're open to suggestion. Again, we don't have testing yet. We are, all of those trees will do well, in the opinion of our arborist. And let me just make two more comments. The live oaks will be on mounds. They will not be in grass. They are spaced for that reason, because again, we're trying to have a lot of ability to use the park area. Secondly, on the trees on the main walkway, again, there wasn't a need, people are not crying out to sit in shade at this park. They want to sit in the sun. So we're trying to create space and interesting experience, seasonal interest, but we don't need a lot of canopy. We need healthy trees. Really open to suggestion here. I know that there are a number of people on the panel who have professional backgrounds in this field. Those are the other two trees that are on the list. And simply, we already, because we're retaining Magnolia and London Plain, we're already up to six trees. So given it's an acre, 1.27, six was a nice number. It came up on the council. Please get the quantity somewhat reduced. Look at, look at the species. Let's have some diversity. Four to six species. We're at six.
One more question, since you're here. On the trees, the London Plains on the north side of Christie, the sidewalk's very narrow there, and there's this sort of falling-down pressure-treat retaining walls, the little, yeah. So this, if we leave 17 and 15 at least, and actually, realistically, all of them, we're going to retain that very narrow sidewalk. Is that correct? We won't be able to, because it's like, it's three to four feet above where the, you know, where the trunk starts, above sidewalk level now.
Right. So this is the interesting trade-off between saving trees and saving conditions that go with where the trees are planted. And yes, we're accepting the importance of saving some trees, and it seems possible to save those, given that that's a berm condition. And they're in reasonable condition. That's, that's all. But yes, they're in a retained condition.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you. So with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment period. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, please come forward.
And when you finish speaking, we should have a sign-in sheet over by where Sarah is sitting. So please sign in after you finish speaking.
Just make sure you adjust the microphone so you're speaking right into it.
I heard the description of the dog park, you know, what's going to be on the ground. I forget what the term was. And it sounded like crushed rock. Doesn't sound all that great for my dogs. They don't like to walk on the roof where I live that has rocks on it. So I'm wondering if that's common to have that. And I'd prefer grass. I got two dogs. I'm waiting for a dog park in Emeryville. That's all.
Good evening, Chair Moss and Commissioners. Of course, I'm Stephen Keller, a resident at Pacific Park Plaza. And first, I'd like to say that I think the park plan is just great. Overall, I think it's a much improvement. We have a little ways to go on that. And like Vanessa brought up, the trees and the existing ones. Living in the building for 12 years, those trees have not grown much. They're not going to get a lot better. And I think with the berm that they are required to grow in, still creates a visibility issue from the street for the police and et cetera. So if we need to save those trees, that's fine, but they're not incredible species or specimens that I think are really warranting. I think if we can re-engineer the soil and plant new trees, we'll get more vibrant growth once that happens. But what I'm here to talk about is that I want us to look at this park as a planning development in which it's part, and not an island known as Phase One. I wish that we had been provided the transit map that they showed on the screen here in our packets, because that's the first I have seen. I don't know about the rest of you. But what I really want to say is that I really think we need to make 63rd Street a transit-oriented street. I think it looks too narrow as it is planned. That would mean taking part of the park, because the apartment building is now built, and we can't take area that way. But if we take room enough to make all of 63rd Street wide enough to handle a variety of transit, be that buses, casual carpool, bike share pods, car share, and even hopefully a streetcar someday, we need to do that. And I think if we take and straighten that end of the park out a little bit, maybe take out the eight parking, parallel parking places that are along this northwest street that's on the east side of the park, we can make up that loss of land. But whether we need to take five feet off of the park or 10 feet to create a real street that can handle transit, I think that is, is very, very important. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we will bring this to the commission for discussion. I guess we can start down here with Commissioner Gunkel.
Yeah, I like the park design a lot internally. And, you know, I saw a lot of others sort of comments on that. The one thing that I, I keep thinking about as these different projects come up that are all part of this, this approved PDP, is that we're sort of picking away at the PDP, and we're being asked, does this still comply with the PDP? Does this still comply with the PDP? And I feel like we're losing track of the overall intentions of the PDP. And it really started to become obvious when we started looking at Parcel D during our last hearing. And just realizing that some of these subtle moves that are being made, the fact that the street, I don't know what, the one that's behind the public market no longer connects through as it was originally intended to, that there's no longer retail in the park, and instead that Parcel C is grown. It all starts to create an environment that is less urban, a little bit more suburban. It isolates Parcel D, creates an environment where Parcel D's sort of got these narrow, almost private roads all around it, roads that really act more as driveways or parking lots than anything else, and faces the backside of what's likely to be a grocery store. It, it just feels like pieces of, like, pieces of the P, the approved PDP are getting changed here and there, and we're looking at different components of it. And instead of, oh, no, I mean, I'd love to look at the park internally, once we sort of resolve what changes are planned for the, to the PDP. But I almost feel like we should be looking at the overall proposed revisions to the PDP before we start looking at which play structures or trees to use inside the park. Because I think that, especially on the north side of the PDP, we're losing a lot with regard to the original intentions. I feel like that, you know, this project as a whole has tons of potential. I'm really excited about it, and I don't want to lose track of that. And, you know, when we were talking about Parcel D, we weren't really talking about the park or Parcel C. And now we're talking about the park, and we're not talking about Parcel D, Parcel C. So I worry about Parcel D. I want to see a way that that feels more connected to everything else. We already saw sort of what happens when, I think it's like 63rd got shifted across from, you know, from one side of Christie to the other, and now we're taking this other street that's behind public market, and we're shifting that so that doesn't tight continue through to 64th anymore. So I just, I think we're losing a lot with regard to, with regard to the traffic and pedestrian flow through the site. And I think Parcel D's the thing that suffers the most as a result of all this. But I like the park.
I think that Commissioner Gunkel's comments are very, very on point and apt. And I would love it if you could put up the PDP approved and the, what's there now, just so that we could see.
That was... May I just make one observation here? This PUD was approved in 2008 before the new general plan was adopted. And so the general plan, street map and land use map and so forth reflects this PUD, because it was already a fait accompli when the general plan was adopted. The roads within this area in the general plan reflect what was in the approved PUD, the major roads, and that included 63rd and 62nd, and a little, kind of a dog leg, the thing that's shown on the east side of the park connecting 63rd and 62nd. So those are intended to be streets, you know, in the city's street system. Those streets are still retained, although one may become more of a plaza, but they are still retained in their proposed PUD. The street behind the public market building and, and west of the theater site was not, is not shown in the general plan as a street. It's just really an access way for the public market area. And actually, if you look at the approved PUD drawings, which neither of which these is, it really is drawn... is, it really is drawn more as a parking lot. The between, the between 63rd and 64th, west of the theater building, it shows really as kind of a parking lot area as opposed to an actual street, although you would be able to drive through it from one end to the other. So the major streets that are reflected in the PDP plan and in the general plan are still retained in their proposed modifications to the PDP.
Well, I do still want to recognize that that is, I appreciate your points on that. And I think that it would be really helpful if we were able to continue to discuss the overall bigger picture of it and how it's working. But in terms of the park, I think that the applicants responded really well to all of the input that they've gotten over time. And I think that, I don't have a problem with the pallet and with the number of trees being removed. I think that it is true that it's, people are going to want more sun rather than shade there. Might be nice to have a little bit of options, a little bit of more options around the play area for parent seating where there is a little bit of shade and a little bit of sun. But aside from that, I'm fine with that. I think the concerns about visibility into the park, I think the berms are great as long as the height is kept at a manageable level, that it's not blocking views into the park. And I, you know, again, I like the way that you've responded to the comments and I do recognize what a difficult situation this thing is for trees.
I just want to say that Commissioner Gunkel's comments are spot on. And I want to come back to that after I make my comments about the revised design. I think as far as the design, it's really come a long way. I think it looks really great in that it's addressed all of the items that we discussed at our previous session and at the other meetings. I mean, it really addresses all those things. The only concern I would have at this point in time is just the lighting of the pathways that that should be looked at in terms of safety in the future. And what else? I'm still struggling with how we got to where we are in the park doesn't have a restroom. We have one at Doyle and this one does not have one. So I know that that's going to be a challenge. I don't, I think that we should, that's something that should be, you know, revisited. I'm not really sure how we got to having no restroom.
The feeling was that it, the restrooms in the public market building could be used.
Okay.
There aren't other really readily available public restrooms near Doyle Hollis Park, but there are here.
Okay. I'm trying to picture where they, where they are and it's sort of coming back to me.
They're in the food court area.
Yeah, they're quite a ways from, from the park. But getting back to Commissioner Gunkel's point, I guess the question is, how do we get our arms around looking at this more as a holistic project? So should we have another study session that is looking at all of these together? Is that something that we can, you know, that we can do? Because otherwise, we're going to talk about it here and it's, nothing's going to really change. We're still going to be approving parts and pieces of this. So that's, that's what I would recommend.
If I could just make one other observation in that regard. That may not be a bad idea, actually, to do a session just on the overall plan. But as you know, under the new planning regulations, not so new anymore, a year and a half old, the planning commission now has approval authority over final development plans. But previously, the city council had to approve final development plans. So when the 60, so the city council approved the PDP for this project. And then probably a year or so after that, the city council, on a recommendation from the planning commission, approved the final development plan for the 64th and Christie building that's under construction right now. In doing so, they moved that road. They approved the relocation of 63rd Street to the north because the footprint of that building is smaller than what the PDP called for. That has all kinds of ripple effects that were not really addressed or resolved at the time that the city council approved that FDP. One of those ripple effects is that it moves the north edge of the park to the north. And it wasn't clarified at that time whether the park therefore got bigger or whether the applicant was still required to build the same amount of park space as the original PDP showed. The applicant's position and staff has agreed is that they are not obligated to build any bigger park than what the PDP called for. That means the park has to get, you know, skinnier, assuming that the existing park will still remain and the expansion area will, will be what gets changed in shape in order to still be the same size. What that then does is it makes the parcel in the middle bigger, both going to the north and going to the, to the west. So you end up with, as opposed to the drawing on the top there that shows the PDP approved, the effect of the city council's approval of that FDP for the 64th and Christie building basically results in the drawing you see on the bottom. So I'm not sure what any of us can do about that, but that's just the reality of how this has played out.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I mean, I see that it had an impact and I guess my concern is that we're going to be doing the same thing, making individual decisions without thinking about how it impacts everything else, if we don't look at the big picture. And I guess the other thing is, I mean, it seems to me that more than anything, it's this decision to take the retail out of the park and add it to parcel C that actually changes a lot, even more so than the shifting of 63rd Street.
Well, the, the drawing that you see on the bottom doesn't reduce the area of the park by that retail pad area. It basically, that was 6,000 square feet. It basically adds that 6,000 square feet to the park area. And the park has not been reduced in order to get rid of the.
The retail used to be in the park and now it's being taken out of the park.
Right.
Which, I mean, again, that's something.
Well, that's a question that's been addressed, been raised at all the various meetings that have been held and most people have felt that they didn't want the retail pad in the park. It just gives you more open space. And let me just say also that I think the applicant has, in good faith, tried to show how the whole thing all works together. Because you'll note, at every study session, they've showed you these kind of drawings that show the whole PUD and how each piece affects every other piece and how the whole thing all fits together. So I'm really, I'm kind of at a loss as to figure out what else we can do to address that overall issue. Be happy to hear suggestions on that.
Well, I think, keeping my comments strictly to the park itself, that it's a terrific improvement over what we saw in the past. And I think it meets most of the conditions that we brought forward.
Well, I'm of an opinion that it's very difficult to talk about fixtures and trees when there's a bigger issue at hand. And so I'm not really sure what we're going to do about it either, but we really need to look at it and we need to look at it before this is approved. I was wondering if we could pull up that transit map that was shown? You had, you had the circulation map with transit?
Yeah, this is actually from our TDM plan, this lower plan.
This is it?
Yeah, it's hard to see.
It's hard to see, okay.
Oh, transit.
What are those purple wiggly lines? I can't even read that.
The purple wiggly lines.
Bus stops.
Those are bus stops.
So the, the plan above was the approved TDM plan, part of the PDP. And then the plan below is our interpretation in addition to that as part of our FDP application for the Shellmount Street relocation. So bus stop with transit shelter, which we're still confirming with AC Transit, bicycle parking locations.
Where's the transit shelter again?
I don't know how to.
There you go.
Where the purple squiggles are, bus stop with transit shelter.
And then reduced speed zone pedestrian plaza. We've, we've, again, looked at this as a street and as a plaza and we've heard a lot of good ideas either way. But the, the big thing is, in the TDM plan, it goes into detail about all the car sharing opportunities within the garage and elsewhere on site. And then it requires a number of bicycle parking spaces that is in the hundreds that we meet and so.
All right. So when I look at the park and I look at the 63rd Street, it does look like a perfect area to have the, the bus, sort of the buses come and queue and that it be some kind of sort of additional transit hub. We have one across the way with Amtrak, et cetera. So, I mean, there's opportunity, if we reduce the width of the park, to make that road wide enough to accommodate this, you know, something, something we very much need. And Shellmount Street is a, is a, it's a very busy artery in this part of town and to have buses stopping on it when we have this really great opportunity here.
Thanks.
To, to create an eddy where we can have buses and car sharing and bike sharing. I'm sorry, not casual carpool and bike sharing and possibly a streetcar in the future. And that seems to be an opportunity we're about to miss, so.
But it's just a little cross street between two main streets.
Sure. But it's the kind of thing that a bus could come through and stop as they are stopped on Christie.
Now, because that's serving, that's a big street and it's serving more buildings. So you'd cut the Shellmount bus route short and come down that street?
Mm-hmm, yes. So that's, that's, it's an option that I feel like we need to keep open. And with, and I mean, like you all said, there's thousands of new units coming in. We are, we need to think about transit here. This is very, very important. So I'm, and also, what's going to happen with the grocery store loading? I mean, at this point, I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I mess you up here?
Maybe I could bring it back up at some point. So, you know, because the street doesn't go through, most of the back of the market place is, is for food, you know, there's, all the food vendors unload there and as well as, you know, the, now the grocery store is going to need to. And so, I mean, that, that's kind of, I guess, an opportunity missed at this point as well.
If I may, Chair Moss, I would just like to bring up the general plan. This is the street circulation map from the Transportation Chapter of the Emeryville General Plan. And as you can see, here's, here's the area we're talking about. The alignment of Shellmount Street here reflects the approved PUD. This is not where Shellmount Street is today. It's, it's over here. These streets here, this is what I was talking about. These are the streets that reflect the approved PUD. So this is 63rd Street and this is 62nd with a little dog leg that connects over to 63rd. And these are shown as local streets, which is what the gray means. 65th is a local street. And then the green means transit street. So you have, Shellmount is a transit street, Christie is a transit street, and 65th up here is a transit street. So that's the, that's the plan from the general plan for where the transit streets are, where the local streets are, based on the approved PUD. So, I mean, you could modify that. You could recommend to the city council that they do a general plan amendment to modify where the transit streets are, but that's what the general plan shows.
I have a question. So in E-Bots, they, they talked about a number of new lines that might start or stop in the public market area. Where are they anticipated starting or stopping their route?
Are you talking, AC Transit?
Yes.
I don't know exactly where they would go. I'm not sure. That's actually based on, those aren't recommendations coming out of E-Bots. Those are, the E-Bots is reflecting what the AC Transfer proposals are. I don't know exactly. I believe they would probably be here on Christie and Shellmount Street and then going to downtown Berkeley or wherever they would go to. I don't know if they would use.
They might be parking along Shellmount.
You mean where they'd be laying over?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know exactly. That level of detail has not been worked out yet. Currently, the buses lay over right here on Christie. And then they go up and around and back down on Shellmount, I believe.
I'm sorry, the, the green streets were the transit streets?
Right. Green is transit streets. Gray is local. Yellow here is a connector street. That basically means an arterial street that is not a major transit street. It's like frontage road. So I'm just saying, that's what the city policy is.
Nevertheless, I think it's, it's something to look at and here we are.
Yep.
So that being said, we'll give you the rest of my comments on the park. Although I'm still very, feeling very strongly about taking a little bit off that north end of the park to allow for the possibility of a future wider street to have some, some possibility of a supplemental transit hub, which I think we're going to need in the future. I really appreciate how you've all responded to the community and the committees and, and you've really come a long way. I wish that the, that main thoroughfare through was more straight and more wide and more, maybe we could bring the park picture up just for a moment. Right up at the top where it says future development, that's where the pedestrian street, I'm not sure what you guys are all calling it, the kind of the.
Plaza.
The plaza. I would like to see a clear line of sight to that from one end to the other. I mean, I want to know how to get across. And here, there's some trees and there's two crosswalks and it's a little confusing. There should be two crosswalks. But I would love to see a better line of sight from Christie Avenue over to the plaza. I think that would improve the, you know, the wayfinding of the park and make it more clear. I love the play structure. I think the dog park is wonderful. I'm all for lawn as a public use. I think it's a great thing. I'm, really, the only tree I have a strong feeling about is a magnolia. And I think the rest, there are challenges with them. I think that the platina species, that's the sycamore, is, it has a lot of dieback that gets a lot of mildew. So I, and I, and I, and I think I respectfully disagree with your arborist about the, the live oaks. I think you're going to find that they'll do poorly and also have major mildew problems. And the Nissa is very loving of acid soil and this is clay. So, that being said, I think the materials for your hardscape seem fine and reasonable. And, let's see if I had anything else, I think. Oh, and I'm glad to hear that you're including metraceteros because there's many species around that do, right in that little area that are doing wonderfully. And I will, and I actually like the pittuspor. It's fragrant and lovely. But I don't know, I don't know enough about it in brackish soil, how it does, so. The last thing I'm going to put a plug in for is what our city arborist said, which is that trees need to be maintained often and carefully, especially staked in windy situations like this and pruned correctly. And this costs money. This costs money that is well spent, especially in the first decade. And so it's, it's crucial that this happen or the trees are going to, we're going to have another Christie Park like we have now with leaning trees and sad trees and this is really crucial. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Kumali, you said the only tree you felt strongly about was the magnolia. You feel, are you strongly in favor or strongly opposed to it?
I am strongly in favor of keeping that one magnolia. I think it is the one tree species that, you know, I walked around, looked every single one, that specimen that looked really good, didn't have problems with it, you know, I agree with the arborist's report.
That one particular tree?
It was 47 or something.
Forty-seven.
Not the species in general.
That one tree.
Okay.
Number forty-seven.
So I, I definitely want to thank the applicant for their, for their efforts. I think this plan is much improved from the, the previous iteration that we saw, which I thought was, was also a really good start, but I think you've really taken our comments to heart and those that you've gotten from the Parks and Rec Commission, and the other, the city council, and the other, the other boards and commissions and the public, and, you know, I can really see them in this plan. I also want to somewhat regretfully sort of echo Commissioner Gunkel's concerns about looking at the site overall. You know, I know that we sort of had a, we had kind of had a chance to do that in the very beginning when we were sort of asked to make a determination about the changes to the, sort of overall programmatic changes to the PDP. But I'm sort of starting to feel like it's a little bit piecemeal, so I think I probably should make the comment before I regret not making it, so I will. That said, as far as the comments on the park specifically, I, I like that you've straightened out the path. I, I am supportive of Commissioner Kumali's comments about, you know, making a clear line of sight. I think that that is, that's really good, because I think that, that plaza is going to be a really nice place, and, you know, to make that visual connection, I think, will be a really important feature. Let's see, what else? I'm a little bit concerned about the, the, what are you calling them here? The grass berms adjacent to the play area? I think those, those could be a really cool feature and could sort of expand the, the play area as a, you know, and provide a, a means of, of other play. However, I really would love to see a good working example of something like that in a similar environment as Emeryville. I think it definitely could work with a park that's, you know, in a, in a vibrant urban environment that's getting a lot of use, but I would like to see it, and the Doyle Hollis Park, you know, does get really a fair amount of use, but I'd like to see this working in a similar environment, because I'm just concerned that it could work either really, really well, or it could become this sort of ignored feature that then it makes that area of the park not useful for very much else, if it's not being used, you know, if it's not being used in a meaningful way. And also, so you may have picked up, I was asking the city arborist a lot about, sort of questions about canopy, because on sheet G-015, you've shown us, like, this picture, which is, I think, is a really great park, labeled "main pathway character," and I look at that and I think, that's awesome, that's, you know, if that's what the main pathway looked like, that we would, you know-
That's New York.
That would, yeah, that would be a win, we would, but also, I mean, this, you know, this photo looks like Bryant Park or something like that. And, you know, I realize there are a lot of challenges on this site as far as wind and soils and things like that, but I do think to the extent that we could get a really great canopy over the main pathway, that would be really a win, because there are, you know, there are huge areas of this park that are, that are unexposed for good reason, and I think, you know, if you want to sit in the sun, there's plenty of opportunities to do that in this park. There's a, you know, there's a nice curvy seat wall along the side of that, that big lawn that will be pretty sunny, and, and areas like that, you know, areas near the, near the playground and things like that. So I was looking at this, at this photo, thinking, well, you know, what makes this so great? And it's, you know, it's the canopy, and also it's got this sort of medium height vegetation with these little fences around it, so it grows really healthy on either side of the path. So I think to the extent that we could get a tree that would create some really good canopy along the path would be really nice, and, you know, use, use of these different kind of levels of landscaping to really make it look lush is really, is really nice. And the other thing I was thinking is, you know, in this photo also, there's this sort of kiosk in the middle of the pathway, the pathway goes around, and I'm usually not one for adding sort of obstacles in the middle of a pathway. I do think that, you know, like I said, kind of the line of sight through the, the park is really critical, but, you know, halfway through the park or somewhere, I think it, it could be really nice to create a plaza with a, with a little fountain in the middle or something like that, kind of like, like this photo also reminds me of Forsyth Park in Savannah, which does have a really prominent photo, fountain that everyone takes pictures of, so, and that works really well, and I think that could really work well here as well, and, you know, something like a fountain might provide, you know, some nice background noise, and just be a nice, you know, a nice focal gathering point, so, you know, to the extent that that could be done in the proper place while still, you know, preserving sightlines from that area to the plaza on the other side and to the crosswalk on the other side, I think that could be a really nice feature. So, oh, and I love the whale in the playground, I have to say. So I think those are my comments. Does anyone else?
I forgot one thing. The lighting, I think that needs to be developed a little bit further, especially for the dog park and the play area, just to, it seems like six lights might not be quite enough for, and possibly the paths. And when I said I liked the pittus form, rhombiform, I do like it, but I completely agree with you that I think you need a more prominent tree for the main walkway that really creates a canopy, yeah.
Yeah, I would just briefly like to also express my support for looking at that 63rd Street width to make it work for more than, not narrow it down right there and see how that would work out, but also to strengthen the connection to the future promenade, maybe not having the tree right there at the crosswalk, but inviting people in, not having that as a focal point that cuts off, but having something, maybe continuing the alley of trees a little bit more straight and more direct through the park, so it draws you into the park from that area, so.
Oh, and just one other comment I just remembered. In terms of allowing, so I'm going to make this comment a little bit tentatively, because I did hear from staff that we're going to be sort of considering some program options for the city-owned parcels next to this site at our next meeting, so kind of pending the outcome of, of our comments on that, I'm going to say if, if the, if the goal is to link this park to a possible future expansion on the Deng parcel, then it doesn't, it's labeled here as utility, so I know there is that utility easement along the side of the site, and it's labeled as utility easement with berm and ornamental grasses. It probably makes sense to not have a berm there if the, you know, if the idea is to link it further, rather than, you know, because then we're going to end up with this visual berm right through the middle of a park. Right? Yeah?
So what do we do about all these questions we have?
Well, I'm hearing that you're probably not ready to approve this FDP at your next meeting, which is what we have scheduled. It sounds to me that the commission would like to have another study session, or rather, I should say, a study session, on the overall PUD, and how all of the various pieces that are being proposed by City Center and Avalon Bay fit together into the overall PUD. I guess we'd be interested at that point to hear the commission's ideas for how you feel the overall master plan that City Center has now should be modified to conform to the PDP, especially in light of the fact that the building at 64th and Christie has kind of thrown everything for a bit of a loop. And I guess a sort of a threshold question is, do you feel that these modifications are significant enough that the PDP needs to go back to the city council to be modified? Or are you comfortable making the determination that these various FDPs are substantially consistent with the PDP? I mean, I think a key question there is to acknowledge that the city council is the one who approved the FDP for that building at the corner, which implied that the rest of the PUD was going to be modified somehow. It would have to be, because the road has moved. So in a way, the city council has already tacitly approved a modification to the PDP because of that road realignment. But, I mean, I guess, it sounds to me like the commission wants to look at the whole thing before you are asked to approve the park FDP. So I would suggest that we schedule a study session at your next meeting on December 11th on the whole PUD, and then come back at the following meeting in January with the park, assuming that you're satisfied after the, after the study session on the whole PUD? Does that sound like a reasonable course of action?
Yeah, I think so, and I think we want to make sure also that we sort of take into consideration the transit landscape in the area, given kind of the E-bots study and AC Transit, you know, what we know about AC Transit's plans for service in that area, and, you know, make sure that the PDP jives with those.
And if that's also when we're looking at the sites to the south of the park, seems like that's going to have a lot of impact on the, the most valuable portions of the park, because right now, you look at the park and it's like, oh, the southern portion of it is the sunny part, but if there's a six-story building to the south of it, sudden, you know, the northern part of the park is actually what's sunny during middle of the day, and then none of it's really sunny after that, so it's just-
Looking at that more closely.
Look at that in the conversation, too.
Okay. Other than those items you've just mentioned, are there any other specific issues that you would like addressed at the overall study session?
I guess if, in terms of the future mixed-use development to the west, to the east, that may end up being a market, we need to talk about how the loading and unloading is going to happen with that.
Yeah, I think that's particularly important, because the new Berkeley Bowl West is a good example, trucks are parked in the entry driveway constantly, and we haven't seen any specific plans on that at all.
Well, let me just say that is evolving. I understand there is a new grocery store that is now in the mix, and that that parcel will probably be coming forward sooner rather than later. I don't believe there is a plan to modify the loading much from what you saw previously. If you recall, the loading was to be on the Shellmount Street side, and we did, and I think the commission did deliberate about that, there didn't seem to be a lot of options for where to put that loading, and we did have Fair and Peers look at that, and, and they made a few suggestions as how to modify it to allow the trucks to get in and out without interfering with the other traffic.
So they wouldn't go up 63rd Street?
The intent, I believe, was that they not go that way. In fact, we suggested that they design it so the trucks would be directed to come from the north down Shellmount from the freeway. But, yeah, we can bring that back, too.
One more thing, I think we started to hear some concerns at our meeting, our last meeting, when we did the study sessions on the, the two other marketplace sites, some concerns about sort of the massing in the original PDP versus what's currently being proposed. I would just hate to sort of leave that out of the discussion and then have it come back at an opportune time.
Okay.
Is the plan to go ahead with the park as soon as it's approved?
You mean to construct it?
Yeah.
I believe so.
The 2015.
All right, any other issues? All right, well, we will schedule that overall study session for your next meeting, and we'll tentatively schedule the park FDP for your January 22nd meeting.
All right, well, I think that concludes this item, and, yeah, we'll take a-